I'll just go up to you two here in the minimum. Chili.
Oh, yeah.
Fall's meeting in order. Treasurer call a roll.
Mr. Trimmer.
Here.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Here.
Mr. Glista.
Here.
Approval of minutes for the April 21st, 2016 special and regular meeting minutes. Second. Treasurer call a roll.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Under Finance, Item 1, recommend approval of the financial report for the month of April 2016.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 2, recommend approval of accounts payable, payroll, and benefit expenditures for April 2016.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 3, recommend approval of advances for April 2016.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 4, recommend approval of appropriations for April 2016.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 5, recommend approval of amended certificate of resources for April 2016.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 6, recommend approval to retain count management health systems at as managed care organization for the June 29, 2016 through June 28, 2018 period.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 7, recommend approval of a proposal by Julian and Group Incorporated CPAs to examine the district's Medicaid school cost reports for the July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016, and July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017. Engagement is to apply agreed upon procedures in accordance with attestation standards established by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. Services are to be provided at an estimated cost of $3,800 or $1,900 per year, which is the same cost as in the prior two-year period exhibit 1.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. There are no accounts payable under recognitions, Dr. Weingard.
I have several, and I am pleased to present these to you. Congratulations to freshman Cameron Sutton for placing in the VFW Voice of Democracy competition. Congratulations to our newly selected mascots, that would be Michael Minnick, Warrior Chief, Tommy Murphy, Assistant Warrior Chief, Indiana Pagnuco, our Warrior Princess. Congratulations to John Zamorelli, Junior Class Advisor in the Junior Class Prom Committee for the 2016 prom. Mr. Alt, Mr. Coffey, and I went to the prom. We had quite a nice time. It was a wonderful event. They let me play the drums. It was very nice.
Oh, I did see that video.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm on YouTube.
You're on Facebook.
Yes, Facebook, YouTube, I'm hip.
Twitter?
If I need to be. Paint and Covert Senior placed first in the culinary competition at regionals and third place at state. Congratulations to our class of 2016 valedictorians. They are Haley Davis, Kaylee Day, Matthew Heffinger, Danny Lowe, Robert Parsons, Hannah Schulteis, and Victoria Stratton. Congratulations to Taylor Vence and Dale Arnold for placing at the Mahoney County Art Show. Taylor received the Special District Award, Best of Show, Purchase Award, and placed first and second in painting. Dale won second in mixed media. I was able to attend that this year. It was wonderful. And Taylor Vence actually took top honors in the entire show, so it was quite a nice thing. Congratulations to John Zamorelli and Brian Stahera in the high school band for their spring concert. Recognize the efforts of our technology coordinator, Jim Graham, Lynn Moore, Chris Earl, for their assistance and support in implementing the state online assessments. And Mr. Fowler, who's right there with Lydia. Hi, Lydia. But Mr. Fowler's our testing coordinator, and I think he would probably echo a big thank you to them. We have moved to online testing. You've heard stories about the challenges of that. Everybody has. Our particular crew here, those three people, made that about as smooth as it can get. So we do appreciate that very, very much. Congratulations to Kelly Genetti, sophomore. She was crowned 2016 Columbiana County Dairy Princess. And congratulations to Mr. Telsrow and the treasurer's office, who recently received the Auditor of State Award for a clean audit report. I'm going to ask Mr. Telsrow to say a few words about that. I know he wants to recognize his staff as well. You have to help me with one thing as we start here, Mr. Telsrow. This is not the first year that we have received this, but I don't know how many years we have got this.
I started in the district in January of 2009, and I think we've been through six audits since that period.
Okay.
And we've received that Auditor of State Award in each one of those years. I wanted to take an opportunity to kind of quote the auditor, Auditor Dave Yost, and what he indicated in his correspondence to us. He starts off by saying, "Clean and accurate record-keeping are the foundation for good government, and the taxpayers can take pride in your community as to the accountability." The Auditor of State Award is given to those entities that file timely financial reports as well as receive a clean audit report. A clean audit report means that your financial audit did not contain findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, any audit findings, or any questioned costs. In other words, it's clean. We also received the certificate, as we have in each one of those other years. And the certificate itself says, "This award is presented for exemplary financial reporting in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, in this case for the year 2015." That's fiscal 2015. I didn't want to finish without stating that I wanted to recognize the three current members of my staff, one of which is here, Denise Ketchum, as well as Karen Rice and Barb Kokovic, as well as recently retired staff member Gala Woodrick, for their efforts in attaining this recognition for which we collectively take a great deal of pride.
Excellent. Congratulations to the treasurer's and staff on a job well done.
Thank you.
WBEA comments. WBCEA comments. There are no visitors' comments. We have no correspondence I'm aware of. Report to the board. We do not have one of those, nor old business. So we're moving to new business under Item 1. Recommend approval for the list of graduates for the May 29, 2016 graduation, pending the successful completion of all West Branch High School and state requirements as listed in Exhibit 2.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 2, recommend approval for membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association and the Northeast Buckeye Conference for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 3, recommend acceptance of bids from A&amp;N Restaurant Supply and Douglas Equipment for kitchen equipment.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 4, recommend the awarding of a contract for the supply of kitchen equipment to A&amp;N Restaurant Supply.
Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 5, recommend approval to enter into an agreement with the Mahoney County ESC, e-learning options to provide online curriculum for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 6, recommend approval for proactive behavior services to provide summer services for our special education student for the 2016 summer.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 7, recommend approval for the Warrior Academy Handbook for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 8, recommend approval to enter an agreement with Central Ohio Medical Review to provide state mandated Medicaid referral services for special education students for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 9, recommend acceptance of the gifts and donations listed in Exhibit 3. Thanks to those who donated to West Branch. Treasurer call a roll, please.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 10, recommend approval to employ Allison Yeko as a certified licensed substitute for the 2015-16 school year, pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item 10, recommend approval to employ Jerry Sainer as a classified substitute for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. If you look at Exhibit 4, please, the board, under Exhibit number C, looking at Exhibit 4, I would like to have somebody make a motion to recommend approval of limited contracts for those certificated employees meeting those requirements and evaluations listed in Exhibit 4, with the exception of Mackenzie Wallace.
So move. Remove those.
Second.
I'll let you remove them. Sorry.
We're just, we're going to, no, we're voting on everybody except Mackenzie Wallace.
Okay, so that was...
So we had a motion.
Lori. Lori.
Me.
Treasurer call a roll on that, please.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item C, under number 2, the same, recommend approval of the limited contract for Mackenzie Wallace, meeting the requirements and evaluations.
I make a motion. We put in Mackenzie. I second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Stay in.
And Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item D, recommend approval of limited contracts to those classified employees meeting those requirements and evaluations as listed in Exhibit 5.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll, please.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item E, recommend approval of continuing contracts to those classified employees meeting those requirements and evaluations, also listed in Exhibit 5.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item F, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Laurie Weingard as Director of Food Services.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item G, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Sherry Malloy as Transportation Supervisor.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item H, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Larry Stuckey as Maintenance Supervisor.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes.
He said he'll turn the air back on.
He turns the...
Item I, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to James Graham as Technology Coordinator.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item J, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Brian Coffey as High School Principal.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item K, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Roger Kitzmiller as Middle School Principal.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item L, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Allison Kretko as School Psychologist.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item M, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Lindsay Samansky as School Psychologist.
So moved.
Second. Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item N, recommend approval to grant a three-year contract to Stephanie White as School Psychologist.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item O, recommend approval to fill the following preseason supplemental positions for the 2016 summer. Preseason volleyball, Penny DeShields; preseason girls' basketball, Walter Shields; preseason football, Daniel Dotto; and preseason boys' basketball, Randy Montgomery.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item P, recommend approval of the following supplemental contracts for the 2016-17 school year. Head varsity football coach, Daniel Dotto; volleyball head varsity coach, Penny DeShields; boy soccer head varsity coach, Matt Thomas; girls tennis head varsity coach, Elaine Bonar; cross-country head varsity coach, Kevin Buckley; and golf head varsity coach, Zach Knoll.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item P, recommend approval of the following supplemental contract for the 2016-17 school year. Girls soccer head varsity, Mackenzie Wallace.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Stay in.
And Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item Q, recommend approval of payment of $50 per bus cleaning. Same fee as last year.
Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item R, recommend approval for an unpaid leave request for Jennifer Bonar from June 1 to June 2, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Mrs. Carnegie.
No.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
No.
Mr. Wallace.
No.
Mr. Glista.
No.
Mr. Trimmer.
No. Item S, recommend approval to hire Miranda Zadigian as the Title I Parent Liaison for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item T, recommend approval to employ the following as Success by Six teachers for the 2016 summer. Laurie Bush, Brianna...
Calcava.
Calcava. Kelly Prodzinski, and Katie Royal.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item U, recommend approval to employ Kim Sabatine as the Success by Six Secretary for the 2016 summer.
So moved. Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item V, recommend approval to employ the following as Success by Six Aides for the 2016 summer. Patty Fleckinger and Meredith Craylen.
Second.
Treasurer call a roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie.
Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Glista.
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer.
Yes. Item W, recommend approval to employ Jennifer Granger